All right, so we are going to remove that second executive. Does anybody have any other need to amend the agenda? Not hearing any. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
So move.
Second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are you approving the minutes that I sent you yesterday?
Oh shoot, you're right. We gotta add that in there.
You have to amend.
Hold on. I don't know if they made it into this one or not.
I didn't.
No, we have it. October 30th.
Do you have them? Okay.
I didn't have them.
They just got left on your.
Oh.
They're just right here.
Oh, they're right here. I'm sorry.
So we want to take a minute. They're not super long.
I'll amend my second.
While you're reading that, well, yeah, let me, let me just, um, so let's go. So we need to amend also add select board minutes of October 30th.
I'm surprised I got as much information on there as I have.
Do we still have to have another vote even though we already have? Okay.
It has to be on your agenda.
I will.
Admitted for a second time, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second the.
Say aye.
Second the second motion.
Second the second one. Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, so we have minutes from the 16th and the 30th. The 30th, what did I say? Hold on. I saw the language on the second page. Ms. Reed explained that the increase in property tax and it wasn't in property tax. It was in the highway department. It was their increase but not property tax.
But it would be the property tax would increase.
Not would be, not by that, not by that percentage.
Okay.
So I think just to reword it to say the increase in just the highway department budget, that would make it more accurate.
Yeah.
But I thought she had said something about the tax increase would be 11 point.
No.
No, because that wouldn't be, that's not how that would work. That wouldn't, that's not how it would work to a property tax.
No, because we'd have to add revenue or subtract revenues from the expenses at that point and it would come lower anyway. But for one department, it wouldn't be that much.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear on that because I don't want anybody to read this and think that the property tax is a 11 point.
And just make the change because it's not going to affect your signature page.
Well, I'll just do this anyway so we know to change it.
Anyways, that's all I had seen. So I don't know if anybody, and I wasn't at the meeting for the 16th. So I'm not sure if anybody else had anything, saw any corrections.
Anything? Oh, he's reading them.
Yeah, I know. Well, we just got them. You're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Um, okay, town managers report.
Okay. Apologize for not getting to you on Friday. I was hanging out with Alicia Montpelier all day. I forgot about it.
Yep.
Um, so try to be brief here. Um, we had a water break on Orchard Hill last week that turned into multiple breaks. Um, there's some pretty old line up there that just is not, it's small, it's brittle.
That wasn't in there.
Highway Department helped us. We were able to make the repairs, have the water back on. Um, we did have to excavate from curb to curb on a sizable spot, but fortunately we had Pike in town and they actually fixed it yesterday. They came up and did it. So that was good. It's all, all taken care of. But, um, yeah, we had, there was a, there was a pipe that had been sleeved with another pipe and it broke on, I think just, you know, with the lot. You get plenty of rocks and stuff in there, it will burst a pipe. So something had happened in there and then they found out there was another leak and then trying to get the parts for this old pipe. It's just, um, it's not, it's not, um, it looks like PVC, but there's a name for it. And I'm drawing a blank on it. No, it's not ductile. It was, it's like, um, I don't know, it's only three inch line. So it's pretty small. And it's just, it was done, I think it was done when they did the, built the development. So it was in the ground before the town took it over. I think it ran off that old well that was over the, right over the hill.
Yep.
Yep.
When you've had development done.
Oh God, back in.
50s, 60s?
Late 50s, early 60s.
Really?
Some of those, there's still some houses that are on wells, which I didn't realize. Some of the older ones are still on wells.
That was a private water system for years up there.
Yeah.
Seventy years old.
Well, up until Proctor discontinued that.
Well, no, it doesn't look that old.
Proctor did that whole new water thing.
Even the last 10 years.
Yeah.
We had a public hearing here on the 23rd for the tri-town trail sculpting study. Alicia and I were the only ones in attendance. Um, it was, so, um, the presentation was in your packets at the last meeting. But, um, I thought it went quite well and there were some folks from, what were they, Wallingford and Clarendon that were pretty big with some of the trails and everything there. And they, remember the guys we're talking, there were two guys that were at the West Rutland. So, you know, we zoom, all three of the towns were zooming in together.
Yeah, and then Dale Christie from Proctor knew a lot about the trails in Proctor.
From what it sounds like, Omea has, is on board with this one as long as we're not close to the plant. And there was another one and I think they were looking at one of the old rail beds, um, in Proctor that runs down West Proctor Road to see if that, who, they were trying, they were having some issues with, they weren't quite sure who owned it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's, there's numerous.
There's tons of them, yeah.
Along that one.
Yeah, yeah. There's a lot of old rail beds.
Could be a snowmobile trail.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. It was a Vash trail.
Dumped out.
It was.
Uh, I think it dumps out, well, dumps out near the plant, Omea Plant, maybe near the power station, some reason I'm thinking.
Yeah. We're trying, I. I think that the majority was, and we were talking about this yesterday with Chad too, to try to get folks to come in somewhere on the Elm Street side. And like, one of my things was, you know, we have Crown Point markers all through there. It'd be great to use that as part of the trail.
Yeah.
There's that old homestead that's like, if you cross Goren Bridge, it sits up in the woods. Um, you know, there's old foundations and stuff up there.
Smith Farm? Did that sound right?
Um, yeah, because that goes up to Atwood.
Yes, that's exactly where it is.
That road up and through there, yeah.
So, you know, it was, it's been well received and.
Smith Crossing maybe?
Maybe.
Uh, no, it would be, I think it's south of.
White's Crossing.
White's Crossing.
White's Crossing.
Oh, oh, right.
Yeah.
I remember hearing about it at the Historical Society.
Yeah. But, um, it's been well received and I gotta tell you, the STAN Tech's been amazing to work with, the engineers that are doing the sculpting. I'm really, really impressed with them. So, um, anyway, it's been.
Excited about the whole thing.
Yeah, it's been a fun thing to do and, you know, everybody's excited about it, so.
So is this mostly a bicycle walking trail? What is it?
Bike, walk, what, yeah.
Yeah, they, they polled people on how, what they would be most likely to use it as and biking and walking were the top two.
Yeah, yeah. So, but it'd be nice if we could get them, you know, and then tie it into all of the trails we have, the network we have here. It's, you know, phenomenal.
Yeah, no kidding.
Yeah. So more to come with that.
Proctor has way more trails than I, I realized until.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Hearing about it the other night.
Um, had to, just some small stuff. I, we're now as notaries, we have to do continuing education. So I had to, had to do that this week or else they yank your notary away from you. So, um, yeah, the years are gone long ago and you pay 20 bucks and it was good for three years. You go down to the courthouse. Now it's not like that anymore. Um, Alicia and I attended the local government municipal day in Montpelier at the National Life Building. It was, you know, all agency and natural resources stuff and, um, it was interesting.
All of our favorite topics were.
Yes, all of our favorite topics. So a lot of it was kind of, you know, sort of NR 101 stuff, but, um, there were a few things that were, I mean, it was just interesting.
No, it was good to, yeah, the, the one I went to was really good about, um, grant funding.
Yeah, yeah.
Specifically for water.
I, I went to one that was on wastewater permits and, and other things and things we have to do now to put a portlet in or up. It was shocking, but. All of our.
Body?
Yeah, I don't even want to get into it right now.
Okay, no, that's fine.
All of our annual paving's been completed. Um, this is great. Sidewalks are done now. We did, well, almost two miles on Whipple Hollow. The guys have already been doing some of the shoulder work. We got a few driveways. We're gonna do a little more on just because, you know, they, the asphalt was a little thicker, so, um, yeah.
Did you know, I'm sorry to interrupt, did the homeowners get any kind of notification about not parking on the sidewalks? Because somebody already is.
So.
And the way, and the way they're parking on it, I'm afraid it's gonna just like, it's, you know what I mean?
Dave, Dave and I were just talking about this tonight because we had a car that refused to move. And so notified the state, they said, Dave, do what you gotta do, get it out of there. So I pulled our parking ordinance and it has clear as day in there, so I gave it to Sulya and he went down with it. But he just asked me and he said, I was at traffic court today and he says there were a lot of officers there from other towns and there were ordinance tickets. So he's like, I want to know more about that. I said, well, that's basically what you did. So, and I was talking to him that we've had some concern with other cars parking on, you know, sidewalks. Yeah.
I was just hoping we'd go the nice route first and maybe just remind people that it is not okay to park on the sidewalks, you know?
We can do that.
Parked at the same place where they told that car.
Okay.
So I don't think they got the message.
I'll let them know.
That's too bad.
Probably not.
But we do, our ordinance is very, very specific on that. So, um, we will start enforcing it more, but it's funny, Dave and I were just talking about that tonight, so. The plain draw sewer replacement project starts tomorrow or Friday. As you see, they've mobilized today. We had a pre-construction meeting yesterday and I have attached, I've asked Markowski's if they could do this like two week look ahead so we can post it on the town website and stuff, kind of like what we're getting from V-Trans on. So they're, they're really hoping to just get like the, the west end down from Route 7 up through Dollar General done because there's a lot going on in that intersection, at least before the weather changes. And obviously weather permitting, we can do more, but our big thing was we don't want to have to be plowing over, you know, bad road because we're just going to ruin the plows and you know, if there's a manhole that's sticking up, it's an easy way to ruin a plow. So they got it, um, you know, we're just going to play it by ear to see how it goes with the weather. Last year we could have done it, you know, so.
So far this year you can do it.
Yeah, so far.
So, um, yeah, we'll see how that goes, but like I said, we'll just keep, you know, getting these reports. Tom said he's probably going to do them every two weeks and we'll have a two week look ahead and put it out there, so. Um, then the Bridge 108 construction update I have on here, um, they're starting to, um, they've been pouring new abutments, which is cool. And I think they're going to start bringing in some steel this week too.
We saw some today.
Yeah, wow.
Yeah.
Placed them today.
No kidding.
Yeah, Butcher and I, well, we didn't see it get placed, but we were early this morning and I saw it.
I went by, they were just dropping it.
Cool.
So, nice.
One, one was already in place and the truck was on the bridge.
Yep.
Putting the other one in.
Yep.
So that's why the flaggers were there.
That's why the flaggers, yeah, they had one.
Well, I know they noticed they had the sign, their construction sign said Wednesday through Friday, expect delays, so. Um, then PD's put your, put the, um.
Yep.
The police thing in there. How many tickets did we write? 71 traffic tickets this month. Route 7 remains to be our biggest one. Um, I think our high score this week on Arch Street was 67.
Oh my God.
So it's, uh, you know, and that's another thing we're just talking about too, are the amount of accidents that we're having on Route 7 in this town. And they're bad. They're bad accidents, but, and we're trying, like even talking to PD, they're like, words is crazy right now. So, um, I don't know what's, what's why, you know, but there's, we had, we had one again tonight. We had one up by, um.
On the corner.
Morningside.
Where's Morningside?
The hill past Sagamon.
Yeah.
Oh, oh.
Out by Wood.
Right.
Oh, okay.
They go just flying straight off the road.
Yeah.
Well, we've discussed that over the years.
Several times, yeah.
It's like, how would you miss that corner?
Not paying attention.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
You should have seen the crash that happened in front of my house last night.
Yeah, that's right. That was a DUI crash.
Talk, talk about lucky. She rode the bank of the ditch twice, did a Duke's Hazard over the driveway and landed on the other side.
That is exactly how someone else described it to me today.
Duke's Hazard? God.
Yeah.
So that's all I have for today.
Well, just to, so the arch thing though with the speed bumps, but we can't, but I thought it would be an issue with the fire trucks.
I personally don't think, well, you're talking to the chief, you could do it almost at the firehouse, just go over and you go.
Yeah?
Then you might be. Get out onto 7 straight from Ludlum Street.
We should look into that then because I thought, I thought that it was a non-issue or a non-starter because of the fire trucks. But, and nobody stops at those stop signs either.
Rogers Road and Middlebury, I don't know if you've taken that, that comes out by Shaw's, by the Dollar Store.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They've got two speed bumps through there.
Hmm.
Really? Oh.
Yeah.
I, I got passed by a vehicle on our street last week, middle of the day.
And we don't have to, I mean, it's our town, our road, so we can just decide to do it. We should.
What, what do you want to do? Speed bumps on it? All right, let's Chad and I look into it.
Well, just, I mean, something to consider.
That road in particular.
You can get temporary ones too, without, it could be removed.
That's what I'm thinking is, you could put them in, well, you could take them out for the winter.
Yep, you could do that.
You know, so you don't have to worry about hitting them with plow trucks.
Right.
So, you know, there's this big push on doing a lot of these temporary traffic calming things. Like, you know, we've, I've mentioned a couple of times that we're trying to do something on the intersection of Elm Street and 7 because cars are just going straight and they're not, they're not stopping.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds like I spent a lot of time with this week because I'm like, Alicia was with me when he did this. But, um, you know, you watch them, they don't turn their blinkers on or anything and it's just. And when, when, if segment two ever happens, that's going to be more of a bump out. So the vehicles coming, heading south would actually have to turn to get on the street instead of going straight down. So we met with Ethan at RPC last year about doing something and now there's a lot of push for these temporary sort of traffic calming things. So we're gonna, we'll, we'll look something up. Probably spring now. We don't want to put it up for winter, but.
No.
Well, that intersection is big enough.
Very wide.
You could cut, so you had to make a, rather than just fall.
And that should deter trucks from trying to go down as the shortcut too.
Well, you would think.
Yeah, so.
That's why they ended up in the cornfield back there.
At least they aren't trying to drive through that little bridge.
Jeez, no kidding.
Yeah.
All right, anybody have any questions about the town manager's report? Um, any select board member remarks? No. Uh, any public comment? Okay, well Superintendent Sanchez, welcome.
Thank you so much for having me. I apologize for missing the last time that I was invited. But our, our usually, our usual hour-long RNSU meeting went to, I think it was two and a half hours that night.
Wow.
We, uh, so we ended up running a little late.
Yeah.
Um, so thank you for having me. Um, so I'm the interim superintendent. I've been here since July 1. Uh, but I'm still trying to carry on all the duties of, of the regular superintendent. So there's a couple of reasons why I wanted to come out tonight and meet with the select board. So number one, just introduce myself, but it seems like, it's been wonderful that we've already been introducing ourselves to one another. Uh, so that's number one. Number two is that, uh, we came across this really awesome, um, digital infrastructure grant that, uh, we found out about it maybe about four weeks or so before the deadline this year. And we felt like it wasn't, uh, we weren't going to have enough time to truly be thoughtful and to truly build a, um, a kind of a, um, a strong base of support within the community. So we said, we're just going to put it off for next year. So the purpose of this grant is to increase the access to, for all of our students to have access to, to internet on fiber, so much faster. Um, along the way, there's going to be additional training for the teachers, additional training for the students. But I think the, the most important thing that for me, um, having, having been a, a high school principal for a long time and a superintendent now for, for several years, is having the community component. And so recognizing that many of our students, nearly 50% of them don't have access to internet to begin with. But if there's a way that we can collaborate together so that that way we bring the high-speed internet and wifi to areas where the students not only live, but where they could go with their parents or where they could hang out. So part of our, part of our five-year plan is to, um, extend the broadband not just from our schools, but also to places like, uh, the town hall, to libraries, places where the students could actually utilize it. But at the same time, making sure that we have two bandwidths, one that's secure and locked down for the kids, but also an additional one that the community and others would be able to use as well, uh, in case they don't have access to it. And so, um, so right now, this is still just kind of in the developmental stage. Um, we will start coming around again, close to the end of the school year so that that way, when it's due in, in October, we're ready to go with letters of support from, from the community. So, um, our goal is that when we have pretty much the finished plan, we'd like to come back and present it to you and how it would affect, um, Pittsburgh and Lothrop. Um, and then if that works for you guys, we'd love to have a letter of support that we can include with our grant application. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, um, I wanted to make sure that we are already out in the community. Seeing as that town meeting day is five months away. And in the, in the time between now and then, we're going to be developing a school budget for next year. In the process, we are, um, in addition to the superintendent coffees that I'm having around the community, in addition to going to, uh, and meeting with all the faculty, um, I'm going to select boards just to really just let the select boards know. We would like as much information from the community early and often so that that way, if any questions arise, if any ideas arise, that we're able to address them as we're building the budget uh, rather than trying to say, okay, we've built the budget, now give us feedback. No, that, I think Vermont school districts have done that for a very long time. And last year, when the school finances changed, um, it, uh, we didn't, at the initial budget vote at town meeting day, we weren't prepared. So going into this year, I want to be extremely proactive. And so we're going to be putting out information, including surveys out on Front Porch Forum. Uh, we'll be putting things in the papers, but we also want to have that human touch of coming out to the select boards and, um, just asking questions that people may have, or at least just putting it out there that do not hesitate to email us to put it on our communications, on our webs, our communications platform on our website. Because it's, it's, it's going to be tight to begin with. We, we already know that, that insurance is going to be going up 11 and, 11.9%. And so when you consider all the different components that go into a school budget, we know that it's, it's going to be a challenge. But we also know that it's our responsibility to educate students to the best extent possible. But we also have to look after our community as well and be efficient as we're educating our students as, as well as possible, trying to get them to the outcomes that they deserve.
Right. Okay, great.
Couple of questions if I may.
Yeah.
Please.
Um, have you talked to the Otter Creek Communic- Union Communication, the CUD?
That's, I was going to ask that too, how that comes in.
You know, the state, years, well, through COVID, actually started these, what are they called?
Communication Union District.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and they've just did a big push and got a bunch of grant funding to expand broadband through, and fiber through Rowland County. So I know they've done the build out in Brandon and they were here, actually, they were here, here, um, a couple of days ago.
Last week.
Um, so, you know, and First Light has got, is trying to do more stuff with, with schools and like hospitals and municipalities. They're a little bit, you know, but they're, they've got a, they're trying to do a big build out.
CUD?
Yeah, it's the Otter Creek Communication.
Yeah, Otter Creek Communication, yeah.
And also I found out today Laura Black was in, who's the chair of the, the Otter Creek one. It's funny, she brought up, if you can see it in my office, there's like this thing that Phidam gave us that we're like a, a, a one gig community or something. It's kind of funny. Um, but, um, she said that, that Phidam will provide free access to like a public building. So I thought the library would be good if they could have free wifi. So that might be, so Laura Black is the chair of that, that Communication Union District and that might be worth having a conversation with her about it, especially if there's. She said every town is, their Phidam's doing this thing where there's going to be one place in town where there would be a public wifi area at no charge. So, um, and like the library came to mind.
No brainer.
But that might be worth having a conversation with her and certainly, you know, I'd help you facilitate that if you want to. She's great to work with and.
That'd be wonderful. Because maybe there's something that they weren't able to cover with their grant funds, we can include that as part of our.
Right, I know. I feel like that could be linked in really easily or hopefully easily, you know?
Yeah, but First Light is another one too because they, they run down like the railway and I, actually they go through our rec center to go to the police academy. But years ago, they, well, they, they wanted to get to like the hospital and I know they came to Otter Valley six or seven years ago and said, look, we can run it. And there wasn't any interest at the time, but they're starting to really, you know, market more to get their fiber out there too, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, and then, so that number of 50% of students not having access, is that, um, because physically they don't have access? Like they're, you know, still trying to run, you know, fiber to more houses or because of the lack of money to pay for?
So it's a combination of both.
Okay.
Uh, because even some of the, some of the more rural areas, some of the more rural parts of our school district, it's really kind of challenging for somebody to get anything but maybe satellite out there.
Yeah.
Um, and so that's one thing, but then, uh, the, the other piece that if you're, it's pretty easy, I'm not going to say it's easy, but you can still, you can get something that's not quite broadband in place. And even, and what, if that's what you have at home, it's, it's kind of, it's, it would be a challenge to do the work that you need to get done.
Right, no, I know. And I just didn't know if you knew what the breakdown was because, I mean, I definitely know there's plenty of people that don't, yeah, just don't have access to internet now. It just like physically doesn't go to their house. But, um, like I don't know if Xfinity ever advertises to the schools anymore. They used to have something up in the library where they had like an internet essentials for lower income families. It's like only $9.95 a month to have internet.
I thi, I think that that has lapsed.
Has it? Okay.
As part of the, the COVID kind of response.
Oh, okay.
And so, but it'd be, it's always worth checking into.
Yeah.
To see if they, if they have something similar or, um, if they can maybe cut us a deal as a school district.
Right, right, okay.
So, yeah, I guess my question is, um, so is this a hardware build out? Or is this actually paying for individuals internet so they have it?
So the, it would be going to, it would be a hardware build out, but it's not going to be going to somebody's house. It's going to be coming to the schools and to community buildings. And there will be, it'll allow us, it'll allow us over these five years to upgrade, um, devices that we have in the schools for the students that are, we give them out, but then we take them back, kind of like textbooks in the old days.
Right, okay. No, because, I mean, I see over the years, a lot of these grants, they're great while the grant's going and then five years later, the grant runs out and now the taxpayers are stuck paying for whatever the bills were.
Well, we would, we, uh, in my opinion, this is something that's really important for us to undertake. So we'd have to find a way, uh, over those five years to build it into the budget. But then try to make sure that, um, at least maintenance, right? And then trying to find different ways to make sure that our students' devices are already, will get refreshed at a regular rate, just like we're doing right now.
I, I think, I think you'd find talking to Laura Black that you would probably realize that there might be some options that have no, that don't cost any money. And again, I'm thinking like just from my days of Brandon, um, First Light Fiber again, I know they run to Goshen from the Rochester side because there's an individual up there who has a lot of money and wanted fiber. And it's, you know that house when you're going up?
No, I don't, yeah.
It stops, it stops right there. There's fiber coming from Rochester.
From the other side of the mountain.
Other side.
Oh, wow.
And, uh, because we tried to get it in Brandon and like, no, we're not going in, you know, but, so Goshen actually has fiber access there.
Because that person.
Because of that one person.
Their house.
So I, that's what I'm thinking. If you talk to Laura Black at the O-CUD, you probably would, I, and I'm sure she'd love to help you too. Like she's, she's awesome. She was here today. Um, but there might be some opportunities that you guys could really jump on.
That sounds great.
I talked to a couple of different Phidam people and they've all said the entire town will have fiber when they're done. And I don't know, I mean, I know Xfinity stops a quarter mile from my house, but Consolidated came. And I know there's phone on every single road around here.
Yeah.
If there's electricity, there's phone. If there's phone, you have Consolidated. It might be dial-up, even though they call it DSL, but my daughter was able to graduate high school last year and, you know, she was able to do it. Yes, there were times where nobody else could do a blessed thing because she was working, but she was still able to get her schoolwork done.
Yeah.
So.
So you know Consolidated and Phidam are the same company?
Right.
Yeah, so, and, um, but again, there was all this funding through these O-CUDs to go to these companies to do these builds and build outs. As there's another one that's Maple something, I can't remember what they're called now, but they were part of like V-Teller, Shorm Teller, one of them that was doing like bump outs like over your way.
Yeah.
So I, I know there's a huge plan in place for this to happen. So, I, I know there's a huge plan in place for this to happen, but, um, yeah.
Just that information's already valuable, so.
There's, there's a sign for that maple on the lawn of the school, Lester School.
Oh, that's right, on the intersection, yup, there is, yup. Yup, and that was one, when I was filling in on the, on the board here for Pittsburgh, like, that was when all that was really starting to take place, and it's, it's taken off, so. Yeah, I, um, I'll try to remember to email you Laura's information, 'cause I think, and then maybe we can set some, I think you'd be really surprised at what they can offer.
And I know, so you've very, I think budgets have already been talked for a couple of meetings, right, I made part of one meeting and then I had to leave, but, um, so, where will be, so, um, we'll start seeing like a, like an outreach for, for?
Yes, so you'll start seeing where, we'll have surveys on the website, we'll have survey, we're gonna try to post surveys as every place that we can, if people are interested in filling those out, of course, we'll have the feedback from families, because they're kind of the captured audience on the newsletters, but it's really important for us to hear from everybody.
Yeah.
So, um, I, in September, I had superintendent coffees, uh, around the school district, I start, uh, kicking them off again, uh, next week. Um, I think I'm at Keith's on Wednesday, yeah, at Keith's on Wednesday.
Oh, yeah?
In the morning, and so, um, so at all of these, uh, you know, number one, I just want to hear what people are thinking, what they're feeling, whether they're parents or community members, uh, but in this case, I, I, if, if we go silent, I'll, I'll start asking budget questions.
Okay.
Good, good.
You're gonna hear cut admin a lot.
I know, and I, I have a response for that too. Because we have to be efficient, and we are already almost as efficient as we could possibly get in admin, so, but. That, and, that question has to be answered with a, the proper answer.
Yup, absolutely. Great, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate you coming.
Thank y'all. Have a good night.
Yeah, you too.
Tomorrow, and we'll get a conversation going with Laura.
If you forget, I'll see you at Keith's on.
I wrote it down, yeah, you probably won't see me that early anymore.
Why, how early is it?
Seven, seven forty-five to nine forty-five.
Actually, I'm heading to.
Upcoming Wednesday?
Yes.
Oh, so if it's tomorrow, I'm heading to Woodstock with Ann tomorrow for a cybersecurity training.
Well, that's where Outer Valley plays on Saturday in St. J.
Uh-huh.
Woodstock at two o'clock.
Yup, wow. Football?
Yeah, football state champs.
Nice, yeah. So, take care.
Thank you.
Good night. Just write myself in the middle here, okay.
It wasn't, I know, and I talked to him, actually, we had a public safety meeting last week, and I mentioned it to Tyler, so, um, I'll follow up again.
Alright, 'cause I might start going to those coffees, they'll hate me. But I'm, I'm up, hell, I've been up since, uh, one fifty-two this morning.
Jeez, that's like barely going to bed.
Yeah, I know, I went to sleep, I think around ten something, I don't know, somebody turned a light on in my head, and I was just on.
Yeah.
All the feeling.
I feel that, yeah. Well, I know, we all need to start going to their budget meetings.
Yup.
Not just we all, like, every, you know?
People, yeah.
People in the seven towns in our school district, because they could be tighter with admin, just, that's just my opinion, but, and some other, anyways, moving on. Um, alright, assessors, errors, and omissions.
So Lisa has just a, a one pager here of some, um, errors and omissions requests.
Yup.
Um, it's just two, two folks. The board still chooses to accept that.
I know, I don't know why I'm looking for it, I already saw it, it's fine, it's pretty straightforward stuff, so, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, and then, um, so Rutland Regional Planning Commission Emergency Management Committee appointments for twenty-four, twenty-five, and, um, Tim Cornell and Mr. Shortsleeves still, they still were willing and wanting to?
Yeah, well, I talked to Bill about it, and he said they were fine with it, so, I saw him.
Make a motion to approve, both of them.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh.
I help them out with it all the time too, as a former EMD, I feel like, I miss that actually.
Shouldn't, shouldn't have to.
I'd like to do it.
No, I'm saying, helping them if they're directors.
Oh, no, well, like, I do the local, the emergency management plan every year, 'cause I've done it for ten years or whatever, and th, these guys don't have time to do it, and I, I don't mind, I do it and then send it off to them, and, you know, we, it's fine, I don't mind doing that.
How is this the, I'm just wondering why this isn't in, we're not, this is outside of a March thing, don't we usually, a point, isn't this part of our normal?
No.
No.
It's not?
Stand alone.
Yeah.
Okay.
Stand alone.
I feel like I would, alright. Um, alright, any questions on the orders? Including there was a new, the tonight sheet, did you see the tonight sheet?
The tonight sheet, no.
The tonight sheet, yeah.
No.
Small and thirteen thousand.
Did we add the trench box on there?
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
You must have missed it.
Yeah. No, we did not.
Can we add that on to, can we, can we add it to the agenda?
Yeah, how do we do that legally?
We need to do another amendment.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll just have to amend it, so.
Alright.
I move to, I move to amend my amended amendment.
I move to remove my second to the amended amendment.
Like, where's Monty Python?
God.
Jesus.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, my god, no, I know.
So, um, I was, Tom was here, we're like, we need a new trench box, and it needs to be used every time there's a hole dug in the ground.
We talked about this.
And there's some more, this is, I could go into it, but I'm not gonna, so anyway, Chad has, um, he got a bunch of quotes, this was the, the best quote, the prices range from eight thousand dollars to twenty thousand dollars.
Oh, god.
Um, so this is a new six by eight, um, and, and it, it'll slide in and out too, um, so.
That's within your realm of authorizing it, isn't it?
Well, it's a little over, but I'd like to use, if we could use some of the high, I'm, I'm five.
We talked about that, we never did that, we didn't trust you that much.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
It's okay, 'cause like, you know, it's still good that you guys know that we're, you know, looking at this, but I'd like to use some of the highway capital money if we could for this purchase, 'cause it's going to be an asset at this point.
Use all the time.
Is this like, did you say it, like, wherever this gets stored, is this just like stay?
It's just.
It doesn't, it doesn't like, like?
No, it's just like, it looks like two like sheets.
Big steel sheets.
You know, that would be, well, they're eight feet, so it'd be like the size of that, and, you know, they just, they bring it down with a loader.
Pile it on it, and they grab and just drop it.
Put a chain on it, and put it on loader, and bring it and drop it in the hole.
You keep it down the?
Yeah, stays outside.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I know, we just don't have a lot of storage space, honestly, so just wondering, right?
We have that whole area down the hill though, so.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
The amount is eight thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-nine cents.
Thank you.
Alright, and then.
I didn't say aye, but it is a aye.
Not yet.
And I guess there is no questions on the orders, so we can sign those. Yeah, not even a single question?
Damn.
There wasn't much on there that's questionable.
No, I guess, which is good.
Alright, there's.
It's only been a week since we've signed the last.
Well, I said, Ian, do you have one, I'm like, no orders, and she's like, no, you did them last week.
We had very few, 'cause remember, we snuck them in on the budget last week to, 'cause we had three weeks between meetings, and we've been trying desperately to make sure things are paid on time. Um, I guess Lisa wants you guys to sign, I think Alicia needs to sign the regional one.
Yep, it's really.
Yup, and just sign somewhere on the, excuse me, the errors and omissions, and there's the minutes.
I can certainly do that.
Thank you.
We just have to sign this one.
I left Dan Adams on here because he was an executive, so I didn't.
Yeah, he just wouldn't sign it, that's all, if he wasn't, he couldn't stand from signing it, it's not a big deal there. That kind of bums me out, that they still have not contacted you. I mean, I had a conversation with three of them coming back from my DLCT passive meeting, and was driving down Writ Run Under, and that was three weeks ago, four weeks ago?
This is, uh, sign wherever you want.
Yeah, it's a wherever, wherever, wherever you think.
I've heard from quite a few parents, they don't hear from the school, in fact, they find out there's a problem from their own cat.
Yeah.
The school doesn't even call to let them know that there was a problem.
Why, was there, then, was there an issue and?
Yeah.
You weren't informed?
Uh, no, actually, I wanted to know what was going on, because there were two cases with my son, and I didn't find out about it until he told me about it, plus there's another kid who's made several, uh, serious threats, okay, whether it's a young dumb kid talking shit or not, I really don't think we want to be the next town on the news.
No, probably not.
So, you know, the, the way I see it, not talking to parents is they're just trying to sweep things under the carpet, make everything look good, no problems, everything's hunky-dory, until something happens.
Right, right.
He's been in there way for years.
Is he on there?
Hello?
Oh, no, barely, hey.
It's a dog shadow over here.
Turn the lights on, so we can see ya.
God, I know, this is spooked.
Sitting in my pickup, man, over your conversation with a couple of police officers, so.
Uh-oh.
Look at me like I am.
On that note, before we go any further, geez.
You're not in cuffs, are ya?
Hold on, let me, let me read that, let me read the thing.
Okay.
Alright, so, I need a motion to go to executive in accordance with one V S A three one three A, where premature general public knowledge would clearly place municipality or person involved a substantial disadvantage to discuss the appointment, employment, or evaluation of a public officer or employee, provided that a public body must make the final hiring or appointment decision and explain its reasons for the decision in open meeting, one V S A three one three eight three, to include the town manager. Boy, they sure can't write those any shorter, huh?
Oh, my god, no, I know.
Anyway, I need to sign your motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that ends the open meeting.